Alrighty, everybody, welcome to this evening's August 11th, 2020 city council meeting. This meeting is being recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, banning gatherings of more than 25 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you are calling on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device or computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to speak to request a request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. And in the attendance tonight, we have Council McCarthy, we have Council LeBlanc, Council Pet, Council Gilman, Council Cox, Council Holmgren, Council O'Hara, Council Memhard, and Council Nolan is not going to be with us this evening. He is not feeling well, so he's not going to be here this evening. So he has the roll call vote. So Jamie, you're going to be first on the roll call vote tonight. And before we get the meeting started with oral communications, I just want to announce that we're not going to take things out of order. We're going to take things in order. But I just want to announce that the people that are here in attendance to for the 105 Winger Sheek Road, the applicant has asked this to be continued to September 22nd, 2020. So we will not be hearing this this evening. If you would like to attend the public hearing, it'll be September 22nd, 2020. If you are unable to make that meeting, you can send your letter and opposition or support to the clerk's office or to one of the city councilors, and we will make sure that letter is filed and it will be read into the record that evening, whether you're in support or an opposition. So we will not be hearing the 105 Winger Sheek Road public hearing this evening. It has been continued until September 22nd, 2020. Alrighty, that being said, Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Oral communications.
Alrighty. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall be, shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The residents will be notified within two weeks period relative to disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Persons speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each, and the council president shall not allow complaints to as to individual performance. Is there anybody that would like to speak under oral communications? We have one hand up, we have a caller. Caller, can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Yep, my name's Craig Hamilton, 46 Grove Street.
How you doing, Craig?
Good, Steve, how you doing?
Good.
First off, I want to thank you and Jamie utmost priority for, you know, getting your sleep sleeper up here on Grove Street and getting some of these potholes addressed. That was greatly appreciated, and it needed to be done, although it's still an absolute mess over here. And I guess, you know, I got, I'm sure you guys all saw my, my article in the paper with the Times. And I guess my, my next questions are, is why is the city not making these, this sewer repair an utmost priority? It's, we're in the middle of a pandemic. We have a lot of, lot of individuals walking up and down Grove Streets particularly that I can see. I have five to seven newborn babies in right around my neighborhood, right in, right from where I can see in my, my living room right now, I can see at least five to seven new babies that I know of. And these parents are out there with their young babies, you know, walking around the neighborhood. And I'm really kind of being tired of being the, the on-call guy as far as, you know, having to keep my eye on overflowing manholes. I just think the city needs to, you know, step it up and figure this problem out. I think it's a real health risk to individuals, and it goes back to the sidewalks again. It's like, you know, none of these sidewalks here are walker accessible, wheelchair accessible, elderly people accessible, strollers accessible. I have wheelchairs going up and down my street now, in the middle of the street, the motorized ones. I've got two or three individuals that I see constantly coming in the middle of the street up, up Grove Street on, on these electric wheelchairs. And I just, I don't know why we're getting so far on the back burner here. And this is not a priority. It's, it's a health risk, it's a safety risk, it's just all kinds of risks. So that's my, my, my next, my, my next complaint here, my next fight, I guess. You know, the road, the road, you know, the way it is is one thing, but the sewer needs to be addressed so the road work can continue here.
I agree. I don't know the exact answer. I know I had a brief conversation with our VPW director. I will get something. Vanessa is on the call with us tonight. She will get something. We'll get something out to you as soon as possible. And just to give you a heads up, we're going to put the speed radar out on Grove Street. It should be out there within the next few days, or by, at least by next week.
That'd be great. That's, that's another issue over here is the speeding.
I got you, bud.
I'm trying to keep my three minutes though. And I've called, I've called Vanessa many times, talked to her secretary. I just haven't gotten any, any response back from the city hall at all. So it's just frustrating over here to see, you know, especially the people way back, we just had a baby over the weekend, a brand new baby. And, you know, and she works for the Board of Health, and she works for the city. So I think, I think that needs to be expedited and getting the sewer work at least completed so we can now, you know, start getting the road back together, sidewalks back together. So anything you guys can do on the other end is greatly appreciated. I'm not going away. I'm going to be here every two weeks and voice my concerns, and I'll keep up with the Times if I have to, just to make sure that it's getting done. But, you know, Steve, I, and Jamie, you too, I greatly appreciate everything you've done for me so far.
No problem, bud. We'll get, we'll get, as soon as we get an answer, we'll get it right out to you, Craig.
I appreciate it, Steve. Thank you.
Have a good one. Thank you. Alright, is there anybody else that would like to speak under oral communications? Mrs. Peterson, could you name an address for the record, please?
Yes, good, yeah, good evening. Mary Ann Peterson, 3 Briarneck Avenue, down at Long Beach. And I know we've been talking and people have been sending stuff in, and it's gone back and forth regarding Long Beach, but I know Les couldn't be here this evening. And I just want to continue to express my frustration with the, the whole issue like today where we had lines of traffic in the middle of the week, two days into the week because of the heat and the fact that we continue to see people not 12 feet apart on the, not, not 12 feet apart on a beach and no resolution to the issue, especially now since the governor has cut back the numbers supposedly as of today to 25% of capacity. I'm just not sure where we're going to go, where we're going with this, but the beach is not big enough. And at high tide, you're, we have no beach and we have no place for people, and there is very little in Gloucester. And now I'm starting to write to Rockport about it as well. They don't believe that there is any issue with crowding on the beach at all, but I'm, I'm just reiterating the fact that today specifically, there was so much traffic on the road that no one, if there was a safety, if there was any, some, anyone that would need to have special services for emergencies, there, you wouldn't be able to get up and down that road. And we continue to see people walking up and down the beach without masks, coming to the beach without masks, and queuing up right in front of 40 Rockport Road at the Russells. And that should not be allowed. I, oh, that's the only other thing I want to say is, if, if we're not going to do anything about this, we need to stop the ability for people other than residents or people going to the hotel from going past Ricky's lot if they're going to the beach, because you cannot have people queuing up in front of 40 Rockport Road. That's just ridiculous, and no one's wearing masks, pictures all over, I have tons of pictures of it. So I've already sent some of them in. But anyway, thank you for hearing me. And Jamie, I'm, I'm sorry I didn't get back to you this past week. I've just had a really tough work week, but I appreciate your continuing to help out on this one. Thank you all.
Alright, Mary Ann, thank you very much, and we'll get something out to you as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Alrighty, is there anybody else that would like to speak under oral communications? Alright, seeing none. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business is the consent agenda.
Alrighty. Is there any councilors that would like to pull any matter off the consent, the consent agenda? Council Cox.
Item number one under communications.
Alright, is there anybody else that would like to pull anything off? Alright, Council Cox.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring everybody's attention to this. It's a program offered by the state, and it's something that has to be accepted by the city in order to participate in. I'm going to have, I, the state has offered to do a Zoom workshop for us. I'd like to do it next Wednesday during the day so city staff can participate, if that's okay with everybody's availability. I will schedule it as late in the afternoon as I can, but Wednesday night, there's a P and D meeting as well, so I can't have it in the evening. And since we only have two weeks to vote on this, I'm going to try to set that up. So I will send out an email with the slides and some information on it and the schedule of the workshop. Thank you.
Alright, Council Cox. Alright, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
As, moved and seconded. You want to call the roll call? Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council Pet?
Yes.
Council Cox?
Yes.
Council Gilman?
Yes.
Council Holmgren?
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council Memhard?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Alrighty, moving right along. Is there anybody that would like to remove anything from the minimums consent agenda?
Don't have one, Steve.
Okay, no problem. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business.
The Budget and Finance Standing Committee report of August 6.
Council Cox.
I present a consent agenda to everybody. If there's no objection, I will move it.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, I will call the roll call. Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council Pet?
Yes.
Council Cox?
Yes.
Council Gilman?
Yes.
Council Holmgren?
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council Memhard?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes on the, the unanimous consent agenda for Budget and Finance on a motion, on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent.
Counselor?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to announce to everybody that the TIF negotiation request was inadvertently put on the agenda. It will not be taken up tonight. It's Budget and Finance's purvey to allow the city to do that. So next time around, it'll be on the Budget and Finance agenda to, to listen to what the city has negotiated, and then back to full city council for a vote.
Thank you, Council Cox. Is there anything else from Budget and Finance?
That's it.
Alrighty, great job. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Is the Ordinance and Administration Standing Committee report of June 15.
Alright, so we have one item for Sarah Velnik, and she does not have her pom, 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 pom sign off yet, so we're going to continue her out to the 25th, and hopefully she'll have everything in order by then. So September, I mean, August 25th for this, we'll continue this out. And Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the Planning and Development Meeting of August 5.
Council Gilman.
So I have no official items to report, except I do want the public to know that we have begun to schedule socially distanced site visits now. And we've created a formula, a safe formula where 10 total people per site visit can attend. That number was given to us by the Board of Health, and just want everyone to know that social distancing will be very strict in these site visits with masks and sign-in and at least six feet apart, hand sanitizer, et cetera. So that's all I have to report on that particular meeting. Thank you.
Alrighty, and next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Is the Special Planning and Development Standing Committee meeting of August 10.
Council Gilman.
Thank you. Um, we have, it was a single item special planning and development meeting on a motion by Council Gilman, seconded by Council Holmgren. The Planning and Development Committee voted by roll call, two in favor, one opposed, to recommend that the city council approve the special events permit to the KPN Chamber of Commerce to hold a shop stroll and dine event on Saturday, August 15, 2020, and September 5, 2020, between the hours of 5:00 PM and 9:00 PM, and street closures between the hours of 5:00 PM and 10:00 PM, with closures of Main Street from Pleasant Street to the West End, inside street closures including Hancock, Short, Center, and Porter Streets with the following conditions. Number one, no merchant setups on the sidewalk blocking entrance ways to retail or residential units, hydrants, crosswalks, or handicap ramps. Two, no outside vendors. This includes other Gloucester-based businesses and nonprofits. Three, no live music or other form of entertainment. Four, the organizers shall allow the fire department drive-through access with the fire engine at the convenience of the fire department. Five, that all of the side streets, Short, Porter, Center, and Hancock Streets shall not be blocked by food establishments, tables, chairs, enclosure equipment, or vehicles, so emergency vehicles may enter and exit Main Street as needed. Six, merchants shall be responsible for their own trash removal. Seven, plumbing codes and regulations shall be adhered to regarding the use of restaurant bathroom facilities. Eight, special lighting and electrical requirements necessitate approval of the inspection of buildings and electrical inspection, inspector. Nine, the closure of the streets at the intersection of Main and Short, Porter, Center, and Hancock Streets must be by means of soft horses or the like as directed by the Gloucester Police Department. Ten, it's a responsibility of the shop, dine, and stroll committee to procure any other necessary federal, state, and local permits and approvals associated with this event. Eleven, that the committee makes reasonable notification to all residents and merchants along the route that would be affected by the closure. Twelve, all other applicable laws, city ordinances, or regulations are in full force, including ordinances regarding blocking of sidewalks. The police department will enforce these requirements in the interest of public safety. And thirteen, the shop, dine, and stroll committee shall also adhere to any requirements expressed by the Special Event Advisory Committee, including that, A, that a letter from the office of the mayor be provided assuring that the event is covered under the City of Gloucester Liability Insurance, and B, that this approval is based on the shop, dine, and stroll 2020 street plan submitted to the city clerk's office, and C, must follow the guidelines of the CDC and the local Board of Health for social distancing. Masks are required inside any business, and strongly encouraged for people walking on Main Street, and I so move.
Second.
Alright, motion's been moved and seconded. We do have our Community Development Director Jill Cahill with us this evening, and our Chamber Representative Susan Coviallo for any council question. So is there any council discussion? Seeing none. I, I have a couple of questions. So I attended the Zoom meeting last night, and I did not attend the shop, stroll, and dine event last time. I know there was a couple of councilors that attended. My question is, how involved are the other shops besides the restaurants in this event? That's to whoever, whoever wants to take a stab at it.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc, and thank you all so much for considering our event coming up this Saturday. So all of the shops are invited to, to participate, all the way from Pleasant Street all the way down to the end of Main Street. And whether or not the shops participate, it's sort of up to them. The majority of the shops on Main Street did participate. I don't have an exact number. I would say it's probably 12 or 14, but don't quote me on that. Not all of them came out onto the sidewalk or into the street where they could put their wear. Some of them were just open to the public until nine o'clock.
Okay. So it was heavily attended by restaurant patrons mostly?
Again, that's hard to say. I know that the restaurants reported that they were, that they were pretty busy, which is great, but I, some of all the, I solicited information and feedback from the merchants. And from the merchants that I heard from, some of them said business was good, some of them said business was, was not so good, but they all said that they wanted to try it again.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, any discussion? Council Gilman? Your mirror, Belle, hold on one second. We can't hear you, Belle.
Sorry.
There you go.
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to ask our Community Development Director Jill Cahill if she could summarize the conversation that Karen Carroll had with Michael Flanagan from the Department of Labor after Governor Baker came up with some more stringent guidelines, because I think that that's applicable, and it was helpful for us to, to learn about yesterday at P and D. So if you could do that through the chair, that would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Jill.
Thank you, hi. So as, as everybody I think on the council knows, I've talked to most of you about this, this idea of continuing some type of closure of Main Street to allow for businesses, restaurants, and retail to come out and allow for additional social distancing on the street really is part of our larger economic development strategy to get, to try to help Main Street as, in any way we can through this. And I know the, we've, we've had, made, made some people happy and maybe not so much with others, but we're trying everything we can. I think the last one was a success, and I think the majority of the people, Council Gilman was there, Council Pet was there, the mayor was there, everybody was wearing masks on the street. I think the feedback was very positive, but little did we know that in between now and then, the governor would issue additional guidance for outdoor events in particular. So knowing that and understanding that this is a sensitive and, and can be divisive issue, I spent some time with the, with Karen Carroll, the Public Health Director, on Monday, right? Today's just Tuesday. And we, we, we went back and forth about that, about this in particular, because as you know, under the mayor's guidance, we are really trying to work with the governor and stick to the governor's rules and, and do the best that we can to keep the public safe. So Karen and I, Karen decided at the end that there was a lot of gray areas with this because there are many Main Streets closed and doing this. So we did ask for additional guidance from the State Department of Public Health and the, and DLS, Division of Labor Standards. So I'll just read what, what we got back from them, so it's clear, because just, I sent, shared with the councilors before the public who's listening. In case you don't know, the governor did change the guidance around outdoor events from 100 people maximum to 50 people maximum. And we just wanted to make sure we were still in a good place with this. So I have to close you, I have to put you guys smaller so I can read mine. It says if they are just closing the street to make it easier to go to restaurants and retail, that is fine, assuming the, the retail shops and the restaurants are within their existing footprint, which as you all know, we did approve that for anybody who's outside. They've already gotten approval, so that is existing. And there should be, there should not be any vendors or other attractions such as live music, face painting clowns, et cetera. And as Counselor Gilman read into the record, that is already part of the conditions. I can't get back to you guys now. Do you still hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I can't get back to you guys, but, alright. So that is what we heard, and like I said, the, the goal with that was, I just wanted to make sure that we were staying within state guidance. Obviously, the first and number one priority for this administration, and I know this council, is the health and safety of the residents. And so that, so we look for that additional guidance from the state. So we feel confident that it's a, we'll put our best foot forward. We'd love to be able to do this again, but we understand that this is a complicated time and decision. So we look, we hope that the councilors will support us, and we're happy to answer any more questions.
Alrighty, are there any more questions? I have a couple. I, I know I should have asked these last night while we were at P and D, and these just came up during the day for me thinking about this, because I'm truly on the fence with this. Good portion of me says not to support it, as part of it that says we need to support the businesses and try to see what this is. How many more of these are scheduled after this one?
Our final one is scheduled for Saturday, September 5.
So this is the last, this is the last one?
There's August and September. There's two.
Right, this Saturday, and then Saturday, September 5 as well.
Okay. So there's one more after this one.
Counselor, Council President, just to clarify to you, we understand, and every permit that CEAC has issued, and Joanne, the city clerk, can confirm, every permit that we've issued has been issued with the caveat that anything can be canceled 24 hours in advance based on the governor's guidance and the current COVID standings.
See, my biggest thing is too, is listening to Counselor Holmgren last night. You know, we, we're trying to battle crowds at the beaches, we're trying to battle, you know, gatherings at the boat ramp and at the beach, boat beach, whatever we're calling it now. You know, so it's just one more thing. We're trying to not have people congregate. And if one person shows up that is positive, and, I mean, it's just going to be, it's going to be tough to track everybody down and to see how everything goes. Like I said, I am completely, better part of me says not to support this because of this, so that's just me. I'm just one vote, but. Alright, are there any, any other council questions? Council Cox?
So I'm, I'm back and forth between supporting this as well, Steve. I, I didn't have any questions, but now that we've kind of switched to more of a statement time period, I'm going to go ahead and speak up. From an economic development standpoint, I'm 100% behind you, Jill. From a Board of Health standpoint, I'm like, shut it down, you know? And I, this is, this is the problem that I'm having, is that I want businesses to do well, I want to afford them every opportunity to do that, but as Counsel LeBlanc just said, one positive person goes downtown, and, I mean, we're, we're in a world of hurt with tracing with, you know, if I say yes to this, I'm condoning an event that could possibly be over 50 people. And, you know, even with the volunteers, you don't have the manpower to be at, you know, both ends at the same time of the street in order to manage that, or taking a head count. It's just an impossible task to do that. You know, in between all the different restaurants that were open and the shops that were participating, I have to say that the likelihood of being over 50 people in that small area is going to be extremely relevant to our process here, and that's not allowing events over 50 people. I get that they're spread out, and it's, you know, I, as far as like the governor's 50 people, I know it's in a confined area or, you know, that kind of thing. And it's, it is primarily an outdoor event, but I, I, in this situation, all nine of us are in a position of we're damned if we're due, and if we do, and damned if we don't. So, you know, this, which side do we? So, you know, which side do we err on? Board of Health says no. Economic development side says yes. So, like, I don't know. This is, this is probably harder than the Boport Hotel vote for me, damn it.
Can I just clarify though, to Counselor Cox? Board of, I did talk to Board of Health. So, Board of Health does not say no. I would not come here or be here. I wouldn't be here in front of you if the Board of Health wasn't behind me on this, and neither would the mayor. We are here because we consulted them. And so, I just want to make that clear for the audience, to make sure they understand that. And we're all, we are all in the same place, counselors. We understand, and I think Susan would agree, we, you know, this is, we're putting this forward to you guys for guidance. And we believe this, but we also understand that we're all in the same position together. So, but it's.
And I understand the Board of Health is supporting this. I meant the Board of Health side of me, like, as far as erring on which side to accommodate.
Thank you, Counsel. Anything else, Counsel Cox? Hold on. Susan?
No, I'm good.
To respond?
Last night, Steve, you brought up being, not wanting to advertise it too much. And I, so today, I just want to let you know that I did pull back the press releases. There won't be any press releases going out. I do need to address the Facebook. We have a lot of followers on Facebook. There are a lot of people asking questions, and I'm just gonna put out exactly what the plan is. I think that part of the low attendance last time is because I put out exactly what the plan is. You know, a lot of folks come to see the entertainment, et cetera. We certainly want locals to come down and shop and use the restaurants. But as far as hanging banners outside of Main Street that evening and writing any press releases or something, I took that to heart. So, we have, I have pulled back on the press releases.
All right. Counsel McCarthy and then Counsel Gilman?
Yeah. I'm taking a ride down Main Street a lot of the Friday and Saturday nights that we are not having the block party, and the restaurants are being utilized. It looks to me to capacity. I don't think there's anything that precludes the stores from opening till nine o'clock anyway. And I think by shutting down the street and curtailing the parking, we're actually creating more room than what would be a busy Saturday night for the restaurants. I mean, giving people more space to be able to walk out in the street and avoid people. And that's kind of the way I'm looking at it. And anything that helps the businesses get through this pandemic, I think is a good thing. So, that's kind of the way I'm looking at it. And Susan or Jill, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the businesses could be open anyway, the restaurants are gonna be open anyway. Why don't we just create the more room for these people?
Okay. John, is that all?
That's all, Steve.
Counsel Gilman?
Thank you, Steve. So, I did work the last event. I worked a booth with Kristen Michelle. We sat six feet apart from each other. We had our masks on. We had a lovely dinner, sitting and working. And we pass out masks and tell people about questions when they ask about the bathrooms and whatever about Gloucester. And then I did take a break, and I went into several of the stores. And I was really impressed with the organization of how the retail shops and the owners had set up their stores to be very organized with arrows and very, very careful about how many people were coming up to the register. And I did not feel unsafe at any point. I only noticed three people that were walking around without a visible mask on them, either around their neck when they came close to somebody. And they came over, and they had been swimming at Pavilion Beach. And they were so grateful to get the masks, and they put them right on their necks and then up, which was great. So, you know, having worked this event, I was comfortable with it. And if we don't do a heck of a lot more advertisement, I don't really think that, you know, I'm quite conservative about social distancing, and I was comfortable working it, and I did not feel that I was putting myself or my family in harm's way or any people. So, I just wanted to say that. But having said that, I want to hear from everyone's before I make my decision. One of the benefits of us taking this to the full council is that, you know, it's really helpful to hear everyone's opinion, because this is, this is a sensitive topic, and I want to do the right thing. So, anyway, thank you.
That's why we have this full council discussion. Counsel Pat?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I was at the first event, and I had expressed my feelings that, obviously, as Counsel McCarthy has said, the restaurants, the city has done a tremendous job in trying to help them get through this pandemic event and do a better job of being able to serve their customers and survive through this. And my impression was that this event is more around the retail to try and help them, the Main Street businesses. And again, I wish there was some more that were open, some chose not to open. And again, I guess that's their choice. But I did attend the event for quite a while. And as Counsel Gilman has said, it was not well-attended as far as large crowd. It was very well, people followed the guidelines as far as even walking a certain direction on the streets, people with masks, people were not congregating together, et cetera. And they were definitely with the masks when they went in to the, to the retail establishments. And I'm glad that the Community Development Director, that Jill and the mayor has gone to, again, Karen Carroll for the, you know, the information for the feeling. And we've gone to the state to get better guidance, to see what we would do. And I feel comfortable in supporting doing this. We're only talking about this time, and one more time. And again, things may change between now and the next time, and we have then, again, another opportunity to change something. But I am at this point just tending to want to vote with the positive side in trying to give some sort of help to the retail businesses downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Is there anybody else? Hold on. Counsel O'Hara?
Thank you. I believe our governor has been extremely attentive to the virus. He speaks daily. He makes changes daily. He has not, he allows this event to go on. I think we need to take advantage. Again, if there was issues, he would make corrections, and this event would not be happening. I think Jill has made the statement that this permit can be pulled within 24 hours. I think the mayor has done her best with her administration to keep some form of normalcy. As has been said, we live, we live on paradise. We have to look back at what's happening. People are cooped up. There aren't any events for people to go to. And this includes people from all over New England that are coming to Gloucester on a daily basis, what is Saturdays and Sundays? It's seven days a week now. The numbers, the governor's monitoring those numbers. If there's a problem, he will clearly make changes, as he has been. I think we owe it to the downtown. We owe it to the mental health of people to allow them to participate in events. If people are not comfortable, then they make that decision, and they don't participate. But I.
Jimmy, you done?
Excuse me?
Did we lose you, or were you done? It just kind of abruptly stopped.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good. I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Counsel Cox, if you want to follow up?
Yeah. Are we voting tonight for just the next one, and then the next one will come before us again? Are we voting for both? Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing else, Counsel, Counsel Holmgren?
I'll just reiterate what I said last night and say I'm not going to be supporting this. I think Counsel McCarthy brought up an excellent point, and I'm really excited that the restaurants are being used on Main Street. And I do hope that the retailers are able to take advantage of that on a regular basis as opposed to just during two weekends. And parking downtown is certainly scarce. So, I mean, that's a really, it's a great point. And I'm glad that you brought it up. Thank you, John. But I just can't, I can't support this right now. I'm sorry. Thank you. And I know, I mean, we've done lots and lots of other things that are business-friendly in the last few months, and I want to continue doing those.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Holmgren. Counsel Memhard?
I'd just like to thank all of you. I think this has been a really great discussion and conversation. I think we're really trying to honor the health and safety of our community and also the economic viability of our businesses in downtown. I think that we need to respect the individual discretion and judgment of these restaurants and provide them with a framework that has some safe guidelines. I think this has been a good discussion. I've talked with Ken Reel at the chamber, in addition to Susan Covielo's input, and I think this is worth our putting out there to try and encourage business in a safe framework. And so, I will be supporting this, and I thank everybody for this really great conversation about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Anything else, counselors? All right. Seeing none, I will call for the roll. Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren?
No.
Counsel LeBlanc? I am going to vote yes this time around, because I trust our team, but I'm going to see how the next one goes. And so, I will be a yes at this point. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Motion to accept the dine, stroll, dine and shop event passes on a motion, on a roll call vote of seven in favor, one opposed, and one absent. All righty, everybody. Great job. Thank you, Jill. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you all very much. We really appreciate it. I hope to see some of you down on the sidewalk. We'll have masks to hand out, and we're looking forward to a nice evening. So, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Thank you, Jill. All right. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order of business is public hearing 2020-009, special counsel permit 2020-001, Winger Sheek Road, number 105, map 261, lot 31, Gloucester zoning ordinance sections 1.8.3 standard to be applied, and 3.1.6 parentheses B, building heights in excess of 35 feet, in the R20 low-medium density residential district.
All righty. So, I will open the public hearing and continue this until September 22, 2020. All right. Madam Clerk, next order of business, do you want me to just read? Oh, sorry. Go ahead. This one's a public, this one's a public hearing.
Yeah. Okay. So, public hearing 2020-023, to amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-270, parking prohibited at all times by adding Traverse Street northerly side from its intersection with Beach Road in a westerly direction for a distance of 390 feet, poll number 1273. And amend section 22-290 towaway zone by adding Traverse Street northerly side from its intersection with Beach Road in a westerly directions for a distance of 390 feet, poll number 1273.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor. All righty. So, if you're calling in on a telephone, you press star nine to speak. And if you are logging in on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button, just to bring everybody back up to speed. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none. Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, are there any counsel, are there any communications?
There are none.
Is there any counselor questions? Counsel Pat?
Not a question, just to comment, as I had commented before. And I think Counsel McCarthy had also felt the same way, that the general feeling is that these motions, when they come before us, that they should come first before the Traffic Commission. But understanding the conditions we're in, and that the Traffic Commission isn't meeting, I will end up supporting this tonight and hopefully give some relief to those people in Ward One and the rest of the beach areas.
Thank you, Counsel Pat. Counsel Memhard, did you want to say something?
Just following up on Counsel Pat's observation, and I would like to thank Bob Ryan from the Traffic Commission for his input and guidance in crafting this tweak to the ordinance. But it is specifically, as Counsel Pat referenced, a matter of tweaking beach parking violations in a private residential neighborhood. This is along the bottom of the golf course on Traverse Street, and people are parking there in the bushes, and they're blocking egress and access from the parking lot, driveways of residents on this end of that street. But Bob Ryan from the Traffic Commission, although has not formally gone through the Traffic Commission, Bob has been instrumental in providing guidance for me in the clerk's office in crafting the language for this. And if, we certainly can review it at a later date, if, when the Traffic Commission begins to meet again. But this is at the request of the neighbors and makes good sense, I think, to address the parking issues for beach violators.
All right. Well, we do have somebody that would like to speak. I'm sure they tried to get their hand up, so I want to make sure we allow them to talk. Joan, are you there? Ms. Archer, are you there? Can you hear me?
Yes, I am.
Oh, there you go. Name and address for the record, please.
Joan Archer, 103 Winger Sheek Road.
Go ahead.
Before you brought up this beach parking, someone had raised the question of 105 Winger Sheek again. Is that all postponed until September 22nd?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. I just needed a clarification on that.
Not a problem. That's what we're here for. Absolutely.
Thanks, Steve.
No problem. Thank you. All righty. Are there any more counselor questions? Counselor discussion? All right. Seeing none, I will call, close the public hearing and call for the committee report. Ordinance Administration voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-270, parking prohibited at all times by adding Traverse Street northerly side from its intersection with Beach Road in a westerly direction for a distance of 390 feet, at poll number 1273. And amend section 22-290 towaway zone by adding Traverse Street northerly side from its intersection with Beach Road in a westerly direction for a distance of 390 feet, to poll number 1273, an ISO move?
Second.
Second.
All right. We're moved in seconded. Is there anything else, counselors? Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the roll call. Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc? Yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Scott. A motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. All righty. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is public hearing 2020-11, special city council permit 2020-003, Atlantic Road, number 163, formerly part of number 171, map 73, lot 41, a portion of former map 73, lot 26, Gloucester zoning ordinance sections 1.8.3 standard to be applied, 3.1.6 B, building heights in excess of 35 feet, 3.2.2 foot no E, dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory. dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses other than signs, reduction in distance between buildings, 2.3.18, conversion to or new multifamily or apartment dwelling, seven or more units, 5.7.5 special permit criteria for major project, and 1.10.1 parentheses A, parentheses 1, parentheses 2, jurisdiction of the city council in the R20 low medium density residential district.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will open the public hearing and continue this till September 8th, 2020. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is for council vote, the warrant for the September 1st, 2020 state primary.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will entertain a motion to adopt the, adopt the warrant for the state primary election to help see if September 1st, 2020. So it's been moved in second. So everybody understand what we're voting on, obviously. All right. Counselor O'Hara.
Yes.
Counselor Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes.
Motion to adopt passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Thank you, Counselors. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
It's a city council decision on the reinstatement of the plastic bag ban.
All righty, so on July 10th, 2020, Governor Baker rescinded the executive order he issued in March that had temporarily suspended both the use of reusable bags in stores and local ban on single-use plastic bags. And the city council will need to vote to reinstate the plastic bag ban. All righty, so do we have any discussion? Counselor Cox.
I wholeheartedly support this measure. I thought the removal of the plastic bags, or allowing plastic bags to be used during this pandemic was a bad choice. I understand the science behind it and, you know, not knowing and everything, but it gave people opportunity to push back on it, and it created quite a bit of confusion. I think we passed it already once, and I would appreciate everybody's support in passing it again, even you, Steve. So I would, I look forward to pushing that measure and getting them out of our ecosystem once again.
All right, so before we move forward with any of this, so I'll entertain a motion to, to adopt the.
Second.
They're moving second, and so now we can discuss this a little bit further. Is there any other councils that like to have discussion on this? Counselor Gilman.
Yeah, I, I guess I could make a motion, but let me just throw out what I'm thinking. I'm totally in favor of this. I'm just wondering if there would be some sensitivity to the businesses that are not quite prepared for another, another, another change, if we could consider making the effect date maybe November 1st or December 1st or something that we felt that we'd be giving them somewhat of a good faith heads up to, to use up the plastic bags that they purchased, just as, as something in all fairness to them. I'm, I'm sensitive. I know a couple of my businesses, I don't have a lot in my ward, but some of them have turned to plastic bags. They've got an inventory. I, I saw that when Vanessa and city staff sent this out for kind of a dialogue, that was certainly a sensitivity. So I guess, having said that, I, I will amend this motion to, to include a effective date of November 1st of 2020.
Second.
All right, so November 1st, 2020. All right, so on the amendment, any discussion? I'm seeing none. Oh, Counselor Pat.
Just a quick question. I mean, we are, at this point, almost the middle of August. You're talking, you know, two and a half months away. I'm not sure we need to go that far. Is there a reason why? Again, I think we're all in support of getting these out of the ecosystem when we can. And for everybody's knowledge, I've got a large supply of them in stock if anybody needs any. But I'm just wondering whether, you know, whether we, whether November 1st is a good date, or say October 1st, or, you know, something like that. Just, just, just a question on my part.
Yeah, so I'll try to take a stab at that. I think some of the businesses have got quite a bit of inventory, so it'll allow them some time to get rid of their inventory. That's just my personal opinion, but I think, I think November 1st is long enough heads up for everybody to get back into the groove of things, rather than try to shove it down everybody's throat. I do agree that we need to get these out of the ecosystem and pushing out just a little bit to get everybody prepared for this is, I think, I think November 1st for myself is, is a good day. So I will be supporting the November 1st amendment.
I'd rather err on the side of longevity versus shortness. They come in boxes of 500, so, I mean, I, I, I'm supporting vows.
Okay. All right, is there any other counsel discussion? Counselor O'Hara? You're muted, buddy. You're muted there, Jamie.
I voted in favor of this, but we're in the midst of this pandemic. We don't, there's no end in sight. This was instituted for a reason, for the health and safety of all involved in this pandemic, the employees. I think it's premature for us to even be talking about this. Let, let's wait and see how things shake out. Let's see if there's a, if there's a vaccine that comes down the road, but the health and safety of the workers in the stores, the health and safety of, of the people out there that, again, we're, we're talking premature. Why are we talking November? Why are we talking at all? This was instituted for the health and safety of all involved. And I'm not trying to be rude, but looking back at why we went back to the plastic bags, why are we talking about it today? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
I can answer that.
Counselor Cox.
It, it was a whim to, there was no science behind, you know, bringing back the plastic bags. It was fear of COVID transferring on the fabric of the bags. That science has been disproved. So if the governor is allowing the cities and towns to reinstitute the bag ban, then I'm going to move forward with that. And again, I hope that I have everybody's support with this. But, you know, Counselor O'Hara, this was, it was a knee-jerk reaction in the beginning. I don't blame that reaction. There was a lot of unknowns to this, but the science has been disproved that it carries on those fabrics. Everybody I know washes stuff numerous times nowadays. So I, I think we need to just let it go up to a vote.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? All right, seeing none, I will call for the roll call for the amendment. Counselor O'Hara.
No.
Counselor Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes.
Motion passes on the November 1st amendment on a roll call vote of seven in favor, one opposed, and one absent. All right, so back to the main motion. Is there any more discussion? All right, I, I have my, my discussion. I kind of agree with Counselor O'Hara. We're going to be having people bringing bags into the supermarkets, may or may not get contaminated. Then we're going to have baggage handlers handling them, and then handling my bag, and then handling the next person's bag. You know, here we are trying to stop the spread of this, so I will not be supporting this again this, this evening just for that reason only. If it wasn't for this, I would support it 100% moving forward. I would have changed my vote last time to support this, but this time during this pandemic, I think that we need to use caution, as Counselor O'Hara said, and try to stop the spread of this. All it takes is one person to bring it home and, you know, affect somebody that's compromised, and we've got a spike, so I will not be supporting this, this evening. I think the plastic bags are effective until further notice. All right, is there any other discussion? Counsel comments? All right, seeing none, I will call the roll call vote. Counselor O'Hara.
No.
Counselor Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, no. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of six in favor, two opposed, and one absent. Counselor Holmgren.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second, and so everybody understands motion to reconsider. Counselor O'Hara.
No.
Counselor Pat.
No.
Counselor Cox.
No.
Counselor Gilman.
No.
Counselor Holmgren.
No.
Counselor LeBlanc, no. Counselor McCarthy.
No.
Counselor Memhard.
No.
All right, motion to reconsider fails on a roll call vote of eight in favor, eight opposed, and zero in favor, and one absent. All right, great job, everyone. Having these debates up here is, that's why we do this. It's tough, a tough job, but that's why we have this. So good job to everybody for voicing everybody's concerns and moving forward. All righty, Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
The next order of business is other business, the O and A minutes of 3220 and the city council minutes of 31020, council action to amend the minutes and motion regarding a committee report due to a script miserror.
All righty, so the council voted on nine in favor, zero opposed to amend the ordinance and administration meeting minutes on March 2nd. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to amend the ordinance administration meeting on March 2nd, 2020. The city council meeting minutes of March 10th, 2020, to correct a script miserror in regards to the reappointment of Robert K. Whitmarsh by striking historical commission where referenced and inserting community preservation committee, an ISO move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second, and so everybody understand the vote. Any discussion? All right, I'll call the roll call vote. Counselor O'Hara.
Yes.
Counselor Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes, and welcome Bob Whitmarsh to the Community Preservation Commission Committee.
All righty, so motion passes and a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
The next order is counsel's request to the mayor.
All right, so I'm going to start off from my left to my right. So I'm going to start off with Counselor Pat.
Nothing this evening, other than thanking the administration and all of our first responders for all their hard work here during this pandemic. I know it's been really difficult, and I want to thank them. And I want to, special thanks to the fire department has had some fires here in recent times. I want to thank them for their quick and efficient response. And again, thank everyone and hope that everyone stays safe and healthy.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cox.
Um, yes, I am stuck in a holding pattern with the Traffic Commission on several issues. I, I think that if we're able to move forward with special city council permits, it would be nice if the committees that have actual business or are unable to process requests, such as the Traffic Commission, then they should be back volunteering their time via Zoom if at all possible. Something, something needs to give here, because I've got two parking spots, two handicap spots that need to be removed, and that the neighborhood's desperate for parking, and I can't get anywhere. So I'm getting pushed back from Traffic Commission saying that they can't do anything right now. But in a previous conversation, Counselor Memhard said that Bob Ryan was instrumental in helping with some information with being processed for that. So if they can do that, I think they can, you know, reach out to handicap spot owners and do the due diligence there if, if they're not going to take my word for it. So, or our words for it, but something needs to give.
Thank you, Counselor. Maybe we can take that up at O and A and push that on to O and A, another, something we can do at ordinance administration. Why don't we, why don't we make a council order to, to put that for ordinance administration?
Okay.
Bring it for a vote. All right, awesome. Thank you. Counselor Memhard.
I'd just like to take this occasion to thank Kim Smith and our Piping Clover Ambassador Group for their conscientious attention to the family at Good Harbor Beach that has now vacated and headed south, resulting in the protective enclosure being removed and the beach being opened up largely for resident and beach, beachgoers' use. Also, that Kim was recognized, and our ambassador group was recognized at a recent Massachusetts Department of Fishing Wildlife Coastal Waterbird Conservation meeting with Carolyn Mustello, who really congratulated the model of the Gloucester Good Harbor Beach effort to protect these birds. So thank you all for your support in seeing this through another season. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCarthy.
Yeah, I, number one, I, I agree with Counselor Cox on maybe getting some of these committees moved, but maybe get some clarification on whether that's an allowable action from what the governor's, has in place. So maybe we could get a clarification through City Legal on that. And just myself and Scott had worked on adding some streets to the Good Harbor Beach area. Maybe if the mayor could, if the signs are in, see if we can't get the rest of those neighbors, neighborhoods covered. It's made a tremendous effect on Good Harbor Beach as far as spitting the population, so that would be it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Counselor O'Hara.
Thank you. I want to ask the mayor if she could possibly fund, direct the DPW to look at the drainage underneath the railroad underpass on Magnolia Ave. That was flooded out three weeks ago with that Thursday rain. It floods out on a regular basis. If you remember, last winter, it flooded out. At the same time, a tree dropped across Western Ave at Buzzwell's Pond. So during that time period, there was no way to get emergency vehicles into Magnolia, excluding going around into Manchester. So this is an ongoing problem. So I ask her, possibly the DPW working in conjunction with the MBTA, who obviously their tracks run over it. Also, I want to thank the administration for working so, so hard to accommodate and make the best of a situation with the pandemic. We have four more weekends until, to get us through Labor Day. I know this is an extremely stressful time for everyone involved. We all are getting phone calls. As, as a person said in the Long Beach public meeting that they had a number of weeks ago, we live in paradise. I've already said it tonight. People want, they're, they're getting, they're getting out there. They've been homebound. They have no place else to go. Counselor McCarthy and I spoke about this last night. The mayor's out daily. I saw her out Sunday afternoon. The mayor's out daily. I saw her out Sunday afternoon in the Good Harbor Beach area, as I was as well. Everyone's making the best of it, and I appreciate and respect. I, I want to just reinforce what the mayor, governor has said pertaining to our schools, that he sees no reason why our schools can't open. I fear that our students have already lost 10 days this year. The, the school days have gone from 180 to 170. The students are the losers in this. Each day, they are not in the classrooms. They lose. Unfortunately, not every student has a, someone at home to monitor them. Some of them don't have internet. I think it's critical for the students to get back into our classrooms. I want to mention that this, this Saturday at the Magnolia Library, we have the American Red Cross from 9:00 to 2:00. People can call in 1-800-RED-CROSS to make a donate, to make an appointment, to roll up the sleeve and give the gift of life. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Counselor Holmgren?
My internet connection is unstable, so I'm going to be quick. I want to thank Counselor O'Hara for bringing up the schools. I have been paying careful attention. Oh, did I, did I freeze? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we have you. Yep.
Uh-oh.
Oh, we got you, Jamie.
Alright, alright, sorry. Thank you. We've been paying careful attention, my husband and I, to what's been going on with the school committee. And certainly, of course, the chatter on social media is a mother. That's how I have been communicating with my peers at this point. And I'm going to call on the, first of all, I, I mean, before anything, I want to thank the school administration, the school committee, the teachers, and the parents. And Madam Mayor, thank you. It has been a very, very difficult journey for everyone. It's going to be tough for a very long time to come, many more months. And I just want to make sure that we are compassionate with each other and try to be as nonjudgmental as possible. Every single family has a different situation that they are looking at, and that includes teachers. So I, I agree. I think that school is the best situation for kids in an ideal world, but this world is less than ideal these days. So we really have to look at every family and try to find an adequate fit for everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gilman?
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to comment that the Gloucester High School graduation was awesome. Counsel O'Hara and I represented the council. I think we represented you well. And Representative Brani was there, and Senator Tar and the mayor. And it was totally social distance, but the feeling and the spirit of the class of 2020 with their proud parents there on the field to either side was just second to none. So I was just really proud of Principal Cook, the school committee, and all the administration for really making that a special event. So we, we did well, and we even got to march. I, I loved marching to confront circumstances, and when Principal Cook came over and said, "You guys got to do one round around," I'm like, "Really?" I always get teary-eyed, but it was really, it was special. So I have just one request to the mayor, and it's just to request a permanent signage through Public Works. No parking to always known May 1st through September 15th at 22 River Road, which is right across from the Anisong Yacht Club tennis courts. That, that sign is fully provisioned under our ordinance section 22271 and section 22291. So it's all on the books. We just need the signage. When cars are parking there, which they are now pretty much regularly, our EMTs just can't get by that location because the road narrows to less than 10 feet, and that's why it's in the ordinance. So putting that on a fast track, Mayor, I know how busy Public Works is, but it would be awesome. I initially had asked for just temporary cones, just to hold us over, and if that's the best we can do right now for the rest of the summer, that's okay. But it, it is authorized for permanent signs, so I would really appreciate that. And other than that, thank you to administration for your continued support. I know you have a lot in front of you, and I totally appreciate your hard work and your teamwork. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I do have a quick request, and it's through our Ward 2 Counselor, Counselor Pat. So this is not from me. I've put the top of Chestnut Street. We need a no parking 20 feet from the corner. There's been a car that parks there every day. I've been working on Chestnut Street, and I don't know how a truck or anything barely makes that corner, so through Counselor Pat, please.
Absolutely. We will, we worked very well with the DPW and the administration to get these signs in. So, top of Chestnut Street, and for everyone's edification, 20 feet from an intersection is part of statute. So if there's any, anyone comes to you and says there's a problem at an intersection, that is part of statute, and it's simple enough, just you can put a request in, either through the mayor or if you have conversation with the DPW, and they will get those signs installed.
Thank you, Counselor, and then-
For the record, there used to be one there, but I believe it was taken out by a plow because that guy is notorious.
Probably. Alright, and then, Madam Mayor, through you, I would like to request that, what Counselor Cox, reiterate what Counselor Cox said, if we can get some boards and commissions kind of on the Zoom, I don't know what our license says. I don't know if there's someone there to run the meetings, but it would be great to have some of these essential. I reached out to the harbor master, and I reached out to our Chair of the Waterways Board, and we had a conversation this morning about getting some waterways boards meeting going from Zoom. So we're, we're looking into getting our waterways up and running before the summer's over, not only for this summer, but to plan for the next coming season. Believe it or not, it's sooner than we think. But through the mayor, I would love to get some of these boards and commissions that are essential to get back up and running through the Zoom meetings. And I think that's it for me. Alright, is there anything else before we adjourn?
Steve, can I say one thing I neglected?
Yep, Counsel O'Hara?
I just want to thank the men and women of the Gloucester Police Department, who put on the badge. Unfortunately, police are taking a terrible rap throughout the country. I just want to let the Gloucester Police Department know, one, Counsel, Counsel O'Hara, and I'm sure others do every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Alright, seeing that this is the end of it, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Moving second. Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
What if I don't want to go? Can I vote no?
Counselor Gilman? Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc? Yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes, good night.
Counsel Memhard?
So long.
Alright, we are, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and we'll see you next week.